Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March, it is March 6th, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. The first item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, and I do need to make two changes. First of all, I would like to add a discussion about the candidate forum or candidate information under discussion items. And we do need to add a non-public for the superintendent evaluation at the end of the meeting. So with those two changes, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Brian, can I have a second? Gianna, all in favor? And we have six in favor, and the student rep is in favor. I will also mention that unfortunately, Dan Klein is not able to be here tonight. The next item on our agenda is public comments. I am showing there are three members of the public here. Are there any additional members of the public who wish to speak who did not sign in? So, all right, so it looks like we have three members of the public. We have three minutes each. Can I please have Keith O'Brien?
Good evening, everybody. Keith O'Brien, resident of Lee, taxpayer here, parent of kids in the schools, also a longtime Oyster River Youth Association coach, volunteer coach and board member. Here tonight to speak about the proposed usage fees for the facilities and the fields. I'll keep my comments very brief. I'm here in opposition of these fees, and I will tell you that there are hundreds of other Oyster River parents who feel the same way. And there are three reasons. One, ORYA has long been a partner with the schools and indeed helped rally support for the turf field that you now want to charge us to use. Several years ago, when the turf field was coming up for debate, the schools reached out to ORYA and asked for our email database so that you could email voters and rally support in the town, in the towns, for the field. We gave you that database, of course, willingly. Our president at the time, Ben Jeans, then served on the school design committee for the field. He visited turf fields in Massachusetts and Maine with then athletic director Corey Parker at the athletic director's invitation to research turf designs. ORYA during this time provided grass fields, our fields, to the schools for free, no charge. And Ben Jeans just told me today that at that time, Dr. Morrison informed Ben that those fields would be ORYA's to use, given everything we had done. It seems wrong now, given everything that has happened, and against the spirit of the Oyster River schools and our community, that you would now want to charge ORYA, our parents, your parents, your taxpayers, your partner for the use of these fields and the other facilities we've used over the years. Two, in enacting these new fees, you are effectively charging your parents and your taxpayers twice. In the most recent year, ORYA had 2,000 participants in our programs. Most of them are young. The schools offer these children no sports programming whatsoever. ORYA fills the void, providing local children with an opportunity they wouldn't have. And almost all of these children are in the district, 88% of them. And by the way, the other 12% are almost exclusively in Barrington, and many of them come here, too. So if the school board votes to impose new fees, ORYA would have no choice but to pass along this cost to our parents, thereby raising enrollment fees and double charging to people who already pay for your fields and facilities. Finally, three, a question of equity and fairness. ORYA is a nonprofit. We serve all three communities in our town, in our community. Durham Parks and Recreation is a governmental agency that is funded to serve one town. We love Durham Parks and Rec, they're a partner with us, too. But why are we being asked to bear a burden when other agencies and entities are not?
Excuse me, Keith, it's been three minutes, so if you can, please wrap up.
Great. What is the distinction there? And what is the cost to your families? And I'll pass it now on to Matt Clode, our executive director. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes. Matt, three minutes.
Hello, Matt Clode, Executive Director of Oyster River Youth Association. To follow on Keith's comments and to lend some calculations to this discussion, if the proposal were to be approved and applied to our schedule this past year, ORYA would see an increase of roughly $62,000 or more in expenses. To give some real-world examples of how this change would affect programs that use schools' facilities the most, Mr. Cisneros, if your child was still playing lacrosse, he would expect a $50 increase to his player fee. Mr. Bacon, a $50 increase each to both of your children's lacrosse fees and a $30 increase to your children's track fee. That's a $130 increase to your family for the spring season alone. Mrs. Gelsi, the last time your kids played ORYA basketball paid $155 and $85 respectively. If this were to pass, you would expect to pay $371 and $301 respectively, or $672 for your family to play rec basketball for one season. Mrs. Smith, if you would see, you would see a $40 increase to your child's lacrosse fee, and both kids would see a $131 increase to their soccer fees once they reach the U-13 age group. For the spring season alone, you'd be looking at an increase of $302 for the family to play. Alternatively, if ORYA decided to split these expenses between all ORYA participants evenly, every participant of every sport would see an increase of roughly $30. That might seem small, but most ORYA families have multiple children playing in multiple sports. One Durham family I looked at today would have $750 added to their annual fees, and they're already a taxpayer. ORYA supports paying our fair share, and for covering expenses, ORYA incurs, but believe the fee structure as proposed would greatly increase costs and force major changes or cancellations of our programming, for which grade K through five families specifically would have no other recreational sports opportunities locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for serving on this board and giving your time here every other Wednesday. My name is Jill Papero. I live in Lee. I have three children in the district. I have volunteered with ORYA. I'm on the advisory group for lacrosse. My daughter played basketball, so on and so forth, pretty involved. I'm here just to ask that you please don't create these fees that will be passed to parents, because when we campaigned for this middle school, we talked about the community being able to use the fields and the spaces. And I just think that recreational sports are really important, because it's the only opportunity for our kids to really play, where everyone makes the team, everyone gets to play, parents are volunteering with the kids. And when they get to middle school, there's tryouts and people get cut. And it's just important to be part of a team and be something outside of school. So the same thing that they said, just probably in a more emotional way. I just want kids to be able to go somewhere and have fun outside of the bounds of school and be able to try something without fear of getting cut. My daughter tried out for a sport that she had never played and didn't make the team and was heartbroken, and that would never happen in recreational sports. She would get a turn to play. So please consider don't charging the fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 21st? Tom?
I approve the, I motion to approve the minutes as the, I'm sorry, motion to approve the February 21st regular meeting minutes, yes.
Can I have a second? Gianna, any changes? Corrections, anything? Everything's good? Okay, all in favor? And we have six in favor and the student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. All right, next we have announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district.
Good evening, Misty Lowe from Mastway School. It's nice to see you all. It's wonderful to be back from winter break. Missed our kids, and it's been a fun energy this week to be back in the building with our students. Since I've seen you, Mastway had a very successful family literacy night with a tremendous turnout. Thank you, Matt, for coming. It was nice to see you there. We also had a second-grade music concert that was a lot of fun right here in this room, a lot of music and movement and excitement, so that was wonderful. Currently, we are getting very excited about the eclipse coming on April 8th. I have two staff members I'd like to publicly thank, Sarah Farwell and Susan Lifer, who have been coordinating with two different professors at the University of New Hampshire, who have come into Mastway to provide some wonderful presentations, educational opportunities about the eclipse. These professors really stressed the importance of the safety classes because of our, the eyes looking at the eclipse. The kids are curious about the fact that at the elementary level, this event will be occurring while they're on the bus going home. So the university has given the entire district, for all students, families, younger siblings if needed, safety classes to ensure that, which is pretty phenomenal. So again, I'd like to just publicly thank Professor Gianforti and Professor Kisi, who is a parent at Mastway, for the work that they've done to write the grant in order to provide the district and many other community members safety goggles. They also asked me to share that on April 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:00, there is a community event at DeMarit Hall for all families in the area around the eclipse. So I promised him I would share that publicly at the board meeting tonight, 6:00 to 8:00 on April 3rd. They will be providing safety glasses there as well. But I just can't, I can't stress enough how wonderful the presentation was, how, you know, the educational opportunity for the kids. We will be doing a variety of things leading up to April 8th to continue to teach the children about the eclipse. It's such a special event and the safety factors around it as well. Our third and fourth graders are doing New Hampshire State testing this week for writing, so our fourth grade completed the assessment today, and our third graders will be testing tomorrow. I just want to remind families that there is no school on March 15th due to a teacher workshop day. And then during the month of March, Mastway is going to be celebrating, we used to do Read Across America Week. That has really expanded under the leadership of Chris Hall and other professionals that are on the Read Across America Committee. It's really going to be a Read Across America Month with a variety of things happening throughout the month of March. That will be kicked off, our PTO is doing a Scholastic Book Fair, which will occur during the children's library block from March 11th through the 14th. But they are also scheduling two family events so that parents can come to the school and access the book fair outside of the school day. So one of those events is on March 13th, from 4:30 to 6:30, an evening opportunity. And then a second opportunity will be on March 17th in the morning from 9:00 to noon. So it's really a wonderful fundraiser for our PTO. They do so much to support our kids, support the expensive costs that come with field trips and all of the other learning opportunities that occur outside our walls of Mastway. So I'd like to be sure that people know the events that the PTO is sponsoring. In addition, we will have a week, the week of March 18th through the 22nd, where there will be a variety of activities happening. The theme this year is Reading Takes You Places, and we'll be looking at the different regions of our country and reading a variety of books and doing a lot of other fun activities, a full school assembly, there's a staff breakfast, a lot of different dress-up days. It's just really going to be a month of celebrating reading. And last but not least, we're excited to invite WMUR back. They come and talk to our third graders every year, and this year they will be, Matt Honag will be visiting Mastway on March 19th, and that's just another fun, the kids get to say, "Good morning, New Hampshire," and be on the TV and learn a lot about weather, from Matt. Questions for me? Thank you.
Good evening. David Goldsmith from Moheramit. Like you heard from Misty and you'll hear from Bill as well, we're conducting the SAS writing portion of the SAS testing this week, so our students in third and fourth grade will be doing that tomorrow and Friday.
David, can you tell the board what SAS testing is, when we use the acronyms?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, that's the state assessment testing from the state of New Hampshire that's required, third through eighth grade. Yep, we have the math and the reading portions in, the window is sort of end of April to beginning of June. This year, they had to put the writing in March because they're doing new writing prompts, and the state has to hand-score them, and that takes a while. So that's happening now. Starting next year, it'll go back to having all of the components of the test happen in the same window for students sometime in that end of April to beginning of June time. It is Year of the Water, a Year of Water, boy, teachers listening to that are going to tell me about it tomorrow. Year of Water at Moheramit, and we have assemblies throughout the school year. We'll be having one this month of March. I'm really excited about all of our assemblies. This is a particularly exciting one for me because it's involving, we're being taught about the science of water itself from middle school students here in Oyster River. Michelle Martin, a science teacher at the middle school, and Dr. Smith here are going to be coming to the school with a group of students from the middle school, and they'll be conducting labs for our students throughout the day, which is a really fabulous way to, you know, integrate our learning for our students across all the ages. So we're really excited about that. As Misty said, we're all getting ready for the eclipse. The same presentations will be happening at Moheramit towards the end of the month, and we'll continue to do school-wide activities to prepare for that pretty awesome experience. It's happening in April, but it's the day after the school board meeting, so I wanted to tell you now that on Thursday, April 4th, that's the night of the Nemo Junior Musical for Moheramit, it will be at the high school auditorium at 6:30. I didn't want to spring it on you the day before, so mark your calendars now, the tickets will be going quickly. And then we are in the middle of our sugaring season. It's been a wacky season for sugars all around the world, Canada and the United States especially. And we have been doing our best to follow the whims of nature this year and tap when appropriate and collect. We've been doing that at our school, on our school property and at Powder Major, which we do with our fourth graders. We have had a tremendous number of parent volunteers, community volunteers, helping not only our collection and our tapping with our students, but then also learning how to boil from Mr. Davis. And so we are continuing to enrich everyone's learning around that, and we're really excited to be able to pass the torch and teach more and more people how to run an evaporator and boil sap and continue that process for a long time. So we're getting there. We'll see how many gallons we're able to produce. Our pancake breakfast is scheduled for Saturday, April 13th, as we talked about before, and I look forward to seeing all of you there. Questions, comments?
David, tell the board your latest substitute, who your latest substitute is, who helped build that sugar shack.
What are you talking about?
What did you tell me today you were so excited about? No. No. Substitute, who's substituting in your building?
Mr. Milliken?
Yes.
Oh, we'll get there, we'll get there.
You were so excited about it this morning.
It was, well, it's very exciting, yes. Mr. Milliken, recent retiree of the high school and of the district, who was a teacher at Moheramit many, many years ago, who was one of the founders of our sugaring program, is coming back to do some math tutoring with students in our school. He started this week. It's very cool. And yep, exactly what Dr. Moore said. Anything else? Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Bill Sullivan, Oyster River Middle School. Again, piggybacking, today we actually started our SAS testing, and it went off without a hitch. You know, we had 600, and I'd say probably 10 students take the test all at the same time in the same window, and we had some help from IT, so thank you. But a couple of computers didn't load, a couple of computers glitched a little, but we were able to get everybody on, and everybody took the test, and it went really well from everybody's perspective. Our next test will be the, it is the reading test, and that will be April 10th. Monday night, March 11th, here in this beautiful space, we'll have our middle school chamber orchestra, will be playing with the high school orchestra, starting at 6:00 PM. It's part of March's Month of Music in Schools. Andrew wanted me to let everyone know that. On, again, this was mentioned, but the professional day we have coming up, we have great stuff planned for our teachers on Friday, March 15th. And with the eclipse, we also have the director of the UNH Observatory coming to Oyster River. He's going to be speaking to our students on April 2nd regarding the eclipse on April 8th, so that'll be a great thing for our students to hear and learn more about. And as I look over my shoulder here and see this great group of robotics students, I want to make sure I highlight our robotics program. They're actually here in the building now, some of them working towards their world competition that they will be heading to. We have three teams that qualified from Oyster River Middle School, the only three teams that qualified from the state of New Hampshire. So that's quite a feat. Three teams are allowed to go from the state, our three teams took all the spots. It's been an amazing robotics year. We've started with about 90 students. It's one of the most popular things we have going now. It's an amazing group of kids, amazing group of coaches that I'll talk about in a second, but they work throughout this whole entire year to get to where they are now, and they've, it's amazing to where they're going to go. They'll be in Dallas, Texas for the VEX Robotics Championship, May 1st through the 3rd. In addition, we had six teams that were also recognized for their exceptional effort and received awards for their teamwork design and excellence. And I can't say enough about John Silverio, Jade Terrell, and Jason Duff. They've put in an amazing amount of work. Again, they're here tonight, the teams that are going to Worlds are being interviewed, they're doing a live stream video feed from our conference room. So their time is, it's amazing how much time and effort they put into this program, and the results are obviously seen by all of us, by the amazing work that they do. That's about it for me. Any questions? Awesome. Well, thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. First, I'm just hoping everyone had the chance to go to the art show this evening. Our Scholastic winners and other artists have some art at the Durham Public Library, and it's from 5:00 to 7:30 tonight, but it'll be up for a couple of weeks, and they are absolutely amazing. So I just wanted to applaud all the students and our art teachers who worked so hard. It was absolutely beautiful work, so I was just very impressed. I want to make sure we know that Jazz Allstate happened in February, and I didn't have the opportunity to talk about that, but we had three students who were able to go to the Jazz Allstate, and that was Molly Schmidt. She did honors jazz choir. Will Blandini, trumpet and flugelhorn. And Micah Baset was honors jazz choir. So I wanted to make sure they were acknowledged for all of their hard work in getting to Allstate. At the D2 State Track Meet, which I know Maeve is going to talk about later, but I wanted to recognize Haley Kavanock, because she broke the division and the school record in the 1500, and she's just really impressive. Based on some feedback from parents over the past two years, Sean Peschall and I actually put on a Passion and Pathways event. It was in the last week of the sign-ups, and it was in the newsletter for two weeks. It's something we put together based on some phone calls to parents and conversations and just information I've gotten for the past two years. So he spent that evening talking about ELOs, different pathways, early college, which used to be running start, and CTE. And so parents had the opportunity to listen to about those different programs, what they do, how they work, ask questions, and we had over 60 parents come to that night, so that was really positive, had a lot of positive feedback. So that's something we're going to continue doing every year. The feedback I was getting from parents was after their freshman year, they really didn't understand how it worked. Parents didn't get a lot of information about that, so we wanted to make sure they had that opportunity. And just as mentioning Sean, he was the ELO Director of the Year in 2022, and so he was awesome. Next Friday on our teacher workshop day, we have numerous teachers presenting on some of our committees that they've been working on. And so three of those are Vision of a Graduate Committee, the Reassessment and Late Work Committee, and the Academic Integrity Committee. And so Vision of a Graduate, I'm on that committee, and I'm working with a group of teachers. They have been researching, looking at 10 to 12 high schools, looking at how senior project or a senior capstone project has been incorporated. John Bromley did that sabbatical a couple of years ago, and so that's work, he's on that committee, and so that's work that we're bringing into this. And so we've kind of paralleled some of that work, come with the same conclusions, and so he's actually going to be presenting his sabbatical work to the faculty next Friday, because I didn't know that, they'd never actually seen that. And so just to see where we are with that and moving forward and get that faculty feedback on the work that we've done so far. As I mentioned at the last meeting, Nancy Michaud is on the Reassessment and Late Work Committee, and so they'll be presenting their work to faculty to get feedback on some ideas they've come up with. They've researched all of the different departments in our school, but they've also researched other high schools to see what their late work and reassessment procedures were, so they can take those into consideration when they're taking something back to the faculty. And then Mike McCann is in charge of the Academic Integrity Committee, so he's working with a group of teachers. And really, it's AI and plagiarism that they're looking at. AI has become a bigger issue in the school, we're seeing it more common. So that's something that we have a basic policy right now, but that's something we want teacher feedback on and how we're going to approach that, so that's something Mike is working with teachers with. A couple of evenings for you to know about, Barrington Course Night is coming up, and that is March 21st. So all of our students are incoming ninth graders from Barrington, their parents come, they sit with a counselor and actually request the courses that they'd like to take for next year. So some of those courses are already chosen, they're required, but they look at the electives in world language or music or things like that that they'd like to take. And then SATs and PSATs are April 3rd. So on that day, the freshmen will have programming all day. Seniors are, will have the day to visit colleges, they can do homework, they can do community service, they can take the day off, as Maeve suggested. And then our juniors do the SAT and 10th graders do the PSAT. And I just really wanted to acknowledge our counselors. In the month of March, they meet with every single student, freshman, sophomore, and juniors, and sit with them and go over their course requests to make sure they're meeting graduation requirements, they're getting the electives that they want. So it's a month where they're doing a lot of hard work, and I just want to acknowledge knowing how this month is really busy for them and how hard they work. Any questions for me?
Just want to add something, Rebecca. I wanted to piggyback what you were saying about the counselors. This week, Suzanne and I, and Rebecca, and Shannon met with all the counselors specifically to look at seniors who are struggling at this point in the school year and what resources we need to put in play to make sure they're successful so they can graduate. And the counselors did a phenomenal job, and they're doing a great job monitoring the kids who are on the fence. So credit to them.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. We are up to board accommodations and announcements, and I'd like to start by acknowledging our two board members who are leaving our board, longtime members. I'm real sorry that Dan isn't able to be here tonight. I will say about Dan, and hopefully he will hear this, either now or watch it later, but, you know, his work over, I think it's, I think three terms, so I believe it's nine years, has, you know, really made a big impact on our district, particularly his work in, on the policy committee and also on negotiations, and has really shown his commitment to the students of this district. So, you know, I hope you're listening, Dan, and we really thank you. And then for Tom, it's been great having you back on the board this year. Thank you so much for your willingness to step back in. Your work with the Superintendent Search Committee and on finance have just really been a huge help. And also your little reminders about whatever happened, too. So thank you also for your work this year. We do have a little token of our appreciation for you. What's that? Would you like to say something?
Actually, I have a few things to say, so bear with me. Just a couple of things that, since this is my last
Just a couple of things that, since this is my last meeting, and it is my last meeting because I took all my campaign signs out to the transfer station. And it's just, sorry that, you know, when Maria Barth was here, she says, well, you can take them to the barn and feed them to her pigs, you know, because the pigs apparently eat campaign signs, but we can't do that anymore. Anyways, just a couple of things I wish I would have said at the last meeting. I'm sorry I didn't recognize Gianna's work on the New Hampshire School Boards Association Resolution and I think our ability to keep present there. It's work to get that through and I think that was something we probably should have acknowledged and I'd like to acknowledge that now. Also in terms of future goals, I'm going to say a term that I don't think I've ever heard said in a meeting in the 11 years that I've been here, but I think it's a goal you might consider and that's universal preschool. I mean, the research is profound, doing work early is important. Denise, you know that probably better than anybody. And there's all kinds of hurdles to do that, space, money, but I think maybe to take on something big like that and just think about it, you know, I mean, it's up to you and you know, but I think the research is there that that's a really good thing to do and to maybe try something big like that. I wanted to mention that I was at the, I went to the New Hampshire House Education Committee yesterday to testify against a bill on literacy, which I thought was amazingly ill-considered. And I was just surprised by how few people were there just testifying on it. And it would have profound implications for how we would do work and what we could do and the costs that would be imposed upon some school districts. So I think we really have to be attentive about that. Maybe not, that shouldn't take up all our space, but, and even a lot of our space, but we, you know, but I was stunned and then I was the only one with any literacy background speaking about it. And there are a lot of people that have a better background than I have who could have spoken about it, but we, you know, we really need to pay attention to those things because they can really affect us. So that was like 10:15 and I'd like to send, maybe send to you, Jim, and then you can circulate the bill and my, just you can kind of see the kind of stuff that's coming down there. And just finally, thanks to the board. It's great to meet the new board members that hadn't worked with before, meet you, Maeve, and see your participation. I think you're a tremendous corps to go forward. And then, you know, the core, I mean, I think that Denise and Brian and two, Dan's not here, you know, I worked with you guys for at least a decade and you know, we went through a lot of things and I think developed colleagueship and I think friendship and it was really important to me. And finally, I know there's going to be a lot of opportunities to talk about Dr. Morris and I hope I'm invited to some of those gatherings, but I often would get, people would say to me, you know, this is such a, such thankless work, you know, you're doing this job, you know? And my response was, yeah, but I get to work with Jim Morris. And I think he taught me how to be a board member and I think we can recognize a lot of major things that he did, but just his day-to-day good judgment, you know, I'd come into him with some issue that was rattling in my head and, you know, depriving me of sleep and I'd sit down with him and he'd think through it and we'd come out in a good spot. So Jim, it was tremendous working with you.
Other board comments? Everybody's quiet? Okay. Well, I'm just going to add one other thing is just to let the board know that I do not plan to seek a leadership position on the board for the next, you know, after the election. So I'll still be on the board, I'm not going anywhere, but you know, I think I've been in a leadership position first as vice chair for several years, some of it with Tom and also with Michael Williams and then being chair this year and it's been a great experience and an honor to work with all of you, but I think it's, you know, it's good to have some new leadership, so just something to think about. All right, so we are going to move along and now we are up to the Assistant Superintendent Report.
Good evening. I have a few announcements to make and then I'm going to introduce our guests. April 15th to the 19th is Earth Week, so I just want to let everybody know there'll be a variety of activities happening that you'll start to hear about from school buildings, about all of the different things. One of them will be a district-wide reduction of plastic use and we will have that on April 16th. The goal is to be plastic-free lunch, so we'll be working really hard towards that. And again, that'll be on April 16th and more information will come out about that. The week before that week, April 11th, we will have a sustainability community dinner and that will be before the masked way performance, I believe. And so again, April 11th, community dinner and they start at 5 o'clock. We'll have a variety of tables set up by students and also people from the community to talk about sustainability in our community and how people can be involved with it and also how our students are involved with sustainable efforts. Along those same lines, we will be having an e-waste collection and I would like to thank Susan Leifer and our sustainability teacher leaders who are spearheading that work. You will hear, people will hear more about that, what they can drop off at the schools and when, and then we will be collecting e-waste and we have someone coming to pick it up as well. The teacher leader coordinators that have been working together on all of this as well as working together with me on sustainability curriculum, scope and sequence and gathering some data around that this year is Beth, Stacy, Rachel, Alan, Sarah, O'Brien, John Bromley, and Susan Leifer. So I just want to publicly thank them for all of their work and their efforts. Summer PD for teachers is going to be coming out soon, so faculty and staff will be seeing that. Along with summer, just a reminder that families have until April 19th to sign up for the REACH and REC camps. So you can find that information on our website, you can also find it on the Durham Parks and REC website. Again, that's the 19th is when the signups end. And I just want to publicly thank Stephanie Kayden for going to all of the school buildings to do a refresher on trauma-informed practices. She went, she's going to go, she's, I think she has the high school left, but she's been at all of the buildings to talk to faculty and staff about trauma-informed practices in the classroom. What is trauma-stress response? What does it look like? How does it manifest itself in school and how can we ensure that all kids are accessing their education? And how can we be supportive of students that have experienced childhood trauma? So she has gone through, we've done this training numerous times, primarily starting during the pandemic quite a bit, but she provided a refresher at each of the school buildings. So I'd like to thank Stephanie for doing that. And does anyone have any questions about any of that? Yes.
The community dinner is from 5 until when?
5 until 6:30 because at 6 o'clock, the concert, I believe that's when the performance starts, so we just go a little bit, we have about an hour before it starts, but we'll send some information out about that also. Other questions? So it is my great pleasure to introduce our Overdrive team, which is our first robotics team from the Oyster River High School. Just want to, I'm going to let them introduce themselves and do all of that, but I just want to say, as a parent of a member of this team, the number of hours and dedication is quite remarkable and I just, it's amazing how much dedication and the skills and the knowledge that the kids gain, working together to create quite a piece of machinery. It's quite remarkable. So I hand it over to them to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their robot this year and the competition.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Zhang and I'm a junior at Oyster River High School and we are here on behalf of Oyster River High School's first robotics team, Oyster River Over, oh, sorry, Oyster River Overdrive, to tell you about our team and what we do. So we have a total of 45 students on the team and unlike VEX, which is the program at the middle school, we all compete as one team. Our team is broken down into sub-teams for mechanical, electrical, software, strategy, and business. Each sub-team has a sub-team lead that assigns tasks and keeps us organized. Basically, we operate like a business and we communicate like a business. For example, at the start of each meeting, the entire team gathers around, so the two team leads can give an overview of what the goals are for today. And at the end of the meeting, the entire team gathers and each sub-team lead shares out what each sub-team accomplished that day, so everyone is on the same page. Even though our team is split into sub-teams working on completely different things, we are still one team working towards the same goal, winning these first robotics competitions, which Felix will talk more about.
Good evening. My name is Felix Garlot. I am a sophomore in high school. So first is a worldwide STEM program that provides the opportunity for students to take part in a collaborative team setting, to participate in different STEM activities. And throughout the course of the season, we will be working to create a robot and to, you know, make it the best that we can for our competition and that's what I'm here to talk about. So this year's competition, we have these game objects that will be shot into a speaker, which is a tall structure about twice the size of this podium. And it can be shot from various different positions on the field and so it is challenging for having to calculate the spin of the game object to go into the speaker. And there will be two teams, there's a red alliance and a blue alliance, and there are three FRC, First Robotics Competition, teams on each of those alliances. And we will have to talk and coordinate with other First Robotics teams to develop the best strategy and win that competition. And the different phases of the competition, there is a 15-second autonomous phase where our robot will be completely hands-off, no hands-on the controllers, and it will move around, pick up pieces, and score them. And then after that ends, there's a tele-operated phase where me and the operator, because I'm the driver, will be driving around our robot and trying to score as many notes, which are the game piece, as we can. And in the last 20 seconds, the end game phase, we will have to climb onto a chain, which can be really difficult and we've worked really hard on our pneumatic system to be able to climb up. And we are attending two competitions. One is the Pine Tree Event and this is in Lewiston, Maine, and the other one will be a UNH event at the Whittmore Center. And it's just going to be a really amazing experience.
Hi, I'm James Brower. I'm a junior at the high school and I am the software team lead. I am here to talk about the Whittmore, the UNH competition at the Whittmore Center. This competition happens on March 30th, the Saturday, and it's completely free to attend, so everyone is welcome to go there and it is highly recommended. This is a great opportunity to show your families and children STEM right in person and it's also just right in the community, just UNH. At the competition, there will be 40 teams there and out of them, you'll be able to find us wearing these shirts. We'll be walking around, it'll be a great time. So it'd be great if you guys attended and thank you.
Hello, my name is Julian Sarzozza. I'm in ninth grade, so I'm a freshman. I'm going to talk a little about the robot. So the swerve, the drivetrain, it's a lot better than last year's. This year's, it can, it's omnidirectional, so it can move in all directions compared to last year's, which you had to, last year, you could only move and then turn, but this year can do both. And the intake to pick up the notes, it's located on the bottom of the robot, so it can just drive over the note to pick it up and then it goes into the shooter and then it can just shoot it to score the points. And yeah, that's really it.
Hi, my name is Sid Sanjay. I'm a ninth grader at Oyster River High School and I'm here to talk about VEX and First Robotics, how the transition. I did VEX last year in middle school and it was my first year doing it and I thought like it was like cool and fun to learn about. I, coming into the high school, I, coming into the high school, I had a different set of skills that I had to learn to do first. It's been a new challenge because we've had to build the robot from scratch and I had to learn everything from all of the different mentors on the team. And it's been fun and this was going to help me for my solve real life problems. Thank you.
Hope you enjoyed meeting some of the team. Do you have any questions or here to answer them?
Any questions?
Yep.
At the UNH competition, are they letting people back into the pit space again?
Yes.
Find us in our shirts. It's free to attend, highly recommended for young fam, kids, families with young kids because you find us, very easy to find and we'll give you a tour of the pits and you can really be part of the action. It's a super fun event right here in Durham. We're really looking forward to that being a real kind of showcase event for the STEM programs here.
What time, Mike, what time does that start?
March 30th, Saturday, March 30th. It runs from 9:00 AM till 6:00 PM. So, and you can come and go as you please on that day, Saturday, March 30th. If you're interested, if you are an engineer yourself or if you know people, they can go there and network and see other people, it's the place to be if you're an engineer. So, yeah. Other questions?
When's the Lewiston event, Mike?
When's the Lewiston event, do you know? March 16th and 17th up in Lewiston, Maine, so looking forward to that. It's our first competition, so we'll be getting the rust off and we'll be really humming at UNH at the end of the month.
So to get up onto the chain, is that, you have to jump up to the chain or are you allowed to pull yourself up, the robot?
We're allowed to pull ourselves up, so.
Last year was balancing, right? You had to get the robot to balance on a tilt table? Which one's harder?
I believe that this one will be much harder because we're trying out our pneumatics this time this year. This will be our first time ever trying out and it's like just a brand-new experience for the. Yeah. Or we're using, like, pull up and then pull us up.
Yeah, another question over here? You want to see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. We need to recruit a volunteer here, Matt. We set up over here, it's tuned to shoot into targets that are right about in here, so you're going to be our target and we have the.
Please catch it, people. How does it pick them up?
Let's put it in front, pick it up and turn around and shoot it. All right, watch out. Yeah!
A perfect note.
Hey, one more, we'll put that ring right up in front. Yeah, and thank you for your time and letting us talk about all that we're doing. Incredible to see 90 students at the middle school and have it going at the high school. Really appreciate all your support, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and I really appreciate your, you've been with this for quite a few years and it's awesome to see, so good luck to you at your tournaments. All right. Any other Assistant Superintendent?
I know, I know, I don't even, I don't, I don't have anything else.
Heather has a follow-up.
Did we ever, Mike was a finalist last year for the Woody, it's going, it'll come to me in an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah, not Woody Hayes, that's Buckeyes, but he was a finalist. He was one of a handful of mentors across the country that were nominated for the award for first and you didn't earn it, but just being nominated out of the pool of mentors across the nation is. it, but just being nominated out of the pool of mentors across the nation is phenomenal. And so, congratulations. I don't know if we ever said that publicly at a school board meeting.
Thank you, thank you. But I would be remiss if I didn't recognize all the other parents. It's a lot of work. It scared some of the faculty off through the years, I think. But to see some of the community and the parents, we have both parents and community members at large who are engineers who are interested in this. So, it really is. So, thank you, but it takes a village. And if anybody's interested, we have room for you. So, thank you.
And I think it's Mike's last year, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. So, so thank you, Mike, very much. So, I am going to try to follow that with a conversation about student data. See if I can get this going. Here we go. So, what I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the, about STAR data. As you heard already from the principals, our SAS, students are involved with the state assessment, the SAS assessment right now. The window for the writing is March 4th until the 15th. And as David mentioned, we, that is earlier window than all of the other state assessments, because it needs to be hand-scored. It's a new assessment for students, and so they need to do the hand-scoring to be able to get to a point where they can, they can have it automated after that. So, so while the kids are taking it earlier, parents are not going to get the results earlier, because it is going to take just as long to get those results as the other, as the other assessments. The ELA reading and math assessments are going to be from April 1st to June 7th. That is the window. And then what I can do after that, we'll have the data from that. We will also, at that time, have the data from our last set of STAR assessments, as well as the SATs. And I can come back and give that information for the total year. I can come back after June 7th and give more information to all of you. So, this is just a small snippet. I wanted to be able to present to the school board before we had a shift, so that we could, I could share that information with all of you. And then I'll come back again. So, we have, just going to give you a few reminders about the STAR assessment. The STAR assessment, we utilize a STAR assessment primarily as our progress, as a progress monitoring tool. It really does help teachers and families to understand student progress. It also is highly used for progress monitoring through our MTSS teams. So, it's one point of data. It is not the only point of data. I just want to stress that. It is one point of data that helps us understand where our students are, how they're learning, and where, how we may grow ourselves as educators to improve student acquisition of knowledge and skills. We give the STAR, like I said, the STAR is administered three times a year. It's in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. And the data actually has, those benchmarks that are used are adjusted. The, this, the test assumes that kids are learning and progressing as the year is moving along. So, the test looks different at the start of the year than it does at the end of the year, the types of questions. So, it is not, it's not stagnant. This is a computer adaptive test. So, when the kids go in to take it, just like other assessments, it does adapt depending on the student's response. The next question will adapt. And the percentile rank is a norm reference score. So, this was a conversation we had a little while ago about, about this percentile rank. This is nationally normed. While we may set our benchmark, the norm, the percentile rank is national. So, we're going to, I'm going to dive right in. And as you can see, I, I kept the 2018/19, so I just add it on. I just keep adding on. At some point, I'll run out of space, and I won't be able to keep it all. But I'm going to do my best to keep it all in there. As you can see for the elementary STAR math proficiency scores from 2018, moving all the way to 2024, we've had a, you know, a slow progression. And you can see that progression in 2021, 2022. And we've continued along those lines. If you think about sort of deviation from, you know, standard deviation, or air, or, you can see it's pretty much the same. We're exactly where we were last year and the year before. So, our kids are doing really well. To have 80, 85% of the kids proficient is, is remarkable. Same thing, you can see the same trend, again, with the reading scores in the elementary school. We start out, kids come back after the summer, in the fall, and there tends to be a dip. That's normal. And then, as the year progresses, you can see that they progress also. And again, this, this test is not the same test throughout the year. It gets increasingly more difficult. And I just want to remind everybody, the 2020, 2021 test, there is no spring assessment, because that is pandemic-related. So, I just want to just remind everybody, that's why there's nothing there. So, I, we've talked, Tom alluded to this before, we're doing a really great job post-pandemic. We really are. Teachers are doing a fabulous job. Our interventionists and special educators, our tutors, everybody, our MTSS system really has been such an integral part of why our scores look like this. We have so many resources, and I just cannot thank the school board and the communities for providing these resources for our students. Whoops. Middle school, it's the same thing. It's the same trend. These are the STAR reading. You can see there was, in 2020, 2021, we saw a little bit of a dip, again, pandemic-related. And then we start to climb back up. If you look at our pre-pandemic scores for reading proficiency, and then you look at now, we're actually, our kids are making gains, which is, which is great. This is an area that we are looking into, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later on.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, these are not criterion reference, they're norm reference, right? So, if, for example, I mean, these scores are great. I don't mean to imply that. But if, for example, the rest of the country has not recovered, and Oyster River has, which there's some evidence.
Yes.
We might be doing as well as we did before, but the rest of the country hasn't done. So, our percentile has gone up, but maybe the criteria, the actual achievement, may not have been.
Our benchmark hasn't changed, though. Yeah.
The benchmark is what, percentage in the top?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's related to the performance of everybody else in the country, right?
Yeah.
But it's not related to an absolute standard of proficiency?
No, because it is norm reference. So, we're using the national norms.
So, I mean, I think these are great. I don't mean to say. But it could be that we've recovered where we were, but the rest of the country hasn't. So, proportionally, we're doing better. We have more kids in the top group. But in a criteria, we may not, we may not be doing, we may be doing as well as we did before.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And we could look at, we could pull the raw data out and look at that raw data to be able to make that determination against our own and not look at the percent proficient. Historically, what we've done with this type of data, this longitudinal data, is looked at the percent proficient, which is norm reference. But we could, we do, when we looked at, when we look at individual students, so when we, if we pulled a student out and said, this student, maybe they're below in a certain area in reading, and we're concerned about them, we pull all the points of reference, we can, we can pull their STAR scores and, and look at individual data pieces that would not be part of that normed reference. Does that make sense? Math proficiency, again, the same thing. We're seeing the same thing. And then, then we started talking about specific grade levels. And so, I'm going to highlight, I apologize for the error, with the grade level. We're going to look at the fourth grade and the seventh grade, not the fifth grade and the eighth grade. So, the fourth grade is one of the grades that we were following. And as you can see, again, we're finding that we have, our interventions, I just want to point out the interventions and the MTSS systems and teachers, tier-one, work that we're doing with our reading program, and I, and I would say foundations, has really been, has been a part of all of this.
Suzanne, can you remind the board why we're monitoring these two grades?
Sure. So, the fourth grade during the pandemic, they were impacted through kindergarten and first grade. So, they had a sort of a different beginning of their academic career because of that. And then, we also look, then we looked at the grade, the seventh grade, because they were in the transition into middle school. They were sort of that grade level that missed some of those transitions, going from elementary school to middle school because of the pandemic. So, those were the two grades that we were most concerned about. And that's why we chose to look at those two grades. And then the math scores, the same, you see the same thing. We see the percentile, the, the number of students that are in the 20, below the 25th percentile is, is a small number. It's, it's, when we think about the number of students we're talking about, we're talking about single digits, makes it a lot easier to be able to meet the needs of those students with our interventionists and our tutors. That makes a really a big difference. And then the seventh grade. So, the yellow, again, is the percentile below, it's the students that are below the 25th percentile. And again, we use this to be able to, as one piece of data, to pull those, pull the information out, pull the student information out, and look at other points of data. It's possible, we all have days that don't go well. And so, you can have a student who comes in to take the STAR, and they just had a bad day. So, that's why it's, it's only one point. And then the seventh grade math scores. And then, I just want to remind everybody, just some changes to the SATs. SATs are not actually occurring until the first week of April this year, the 3rd. So, I just wanted to remind everybody, there are changes. The SAT and the PSAT are fully digital now. The PSAT had remained on paper for many years. And this year, when we had the NMSQT, which is the National Merit PSATs, they were digital. So, that, we're starting to see that flip. So, in the spring, when we have the high school administer the SAT, which is the state assessment, the, we also have the juniors taking the PSAT. And traditionally, they have taken it on paper. This year, they will be using their computers to do it. So, it is fully digital now. Again, multiple choice, the ranging, the range of scores is the same. There's two sections. There's the reading/writing section and the math section. It is a nationally normed exam, so that, so that's something just to remind everybody about. And then, starting this year, it's a shorter test in length. So, so the number of hours is going to be shorter, and the reading passages are going to be shorter, and there's going to be easier access to tools like the calculator. It's going to have an easier access on the actual computer. So, kids won't necessarily need to be bringing, it used to be, when I took the SATs, you had to bring your own calculator. But they're trying, we're trying to, they're trying to make it more accessible to kids that, in schools that maybe don't have the resources to be able to give all students a calculator, or all students have a calculator. So, they're trying to make that more accessible. So, those are a little bit of, some of the changes. And again, even though a lot of colleges and universities are test optional, we find that most of our students are, I mean, they're taking it because it's the state assessment. But a lot of our students are also taking the SAT outside of school on their own, because a lot of our students choose to send their scores, regardless if they're test optional or not. So, we still provide information to families about that. And the counseling office has information about that, if families are looking for more information about SATs and preparation for the SATs. So, I encourage families to reach out to them if they're looking for additional information about that. And again, we don't have the scores. I'm happy to come back, though, and give those scores to you, so we can take a look at them. And whoops, I skipped. And this is a slide, just to kind of talk about what Tom was referring to at one of the previous, I don't think it was the la, it may have been the last school board meeting. But this is the article, and I just wanted to put it out there for people so that they could access it if they wanted to. I did put it in the newsletter, and that went out, the superintendent newsletter with the link, if people wanted to take a look at it. This data that you see in this article is not our STAR data. It is actually the state assessment data that they use. We don't use the state assessment data to monitor student growth, just because there's so much variation in that test from, from, as you can see, we have a new writing test now. So, every four years, usually, there's a little bit of variation to what the test looks like. So, it makes it really difficult to look at that longitudinal growth for students and for our schools. So, we use a different universal test. But, but it's really interesting to look at this and say, okay, this is, these are our SAS, based on our SAS scores, which is the state assessment. You see the same type of growth, the same type of growth. And this is just for math, but it's, it's similar. If you can dig a little deeper and see that it's, it's similar for reading as well. So, I put that in there just to make sure people had access to that, since it was brought up at the last school board meeting. And then, just a reminder of some of the action items that I brought up at the, last year, moving into this year. We're continuing with our multi-tiered systems of support. We continue to implement foundations as part of our literacy instruction. We're monitoring tools. We're looking for monitoring tools for math. It's been wonderful having Ellen and Sarah and working with the K through five teams on the Eureka squared rollout. That has gone really, really well. During the teacher workshop day, grade-level teams are going to be meeting to talk about math again. So, we continue to work on that and find our tools for progress monitoring to be able to support our students. We have reassembled the district-wide MTSS team, and we're looking at what all of these MTSS systems look like at each grade level to make sure it's a continuum of practices. And we're using similar language, so that when we have these conversations about tiers of support, everybody's speaking the same language. And then, really, the one thing out of all of these things, which I'm not going to go through each of them, but the one thing that we continue to work on, and we're waiting, because we don't necessarily have all the data, is really to look at the middle school, high school, and even the elementary school at some point, look at our reading and our writing data, and sort of pull those pieces of data apart to figure out how are we serving our kids? And is this an area that we can grow and learn in, and be able to provide our students with additional support? So, we're going to wait, we need to wait to get some of our SAT data back, and also the SAS data, and then take our last set of STAR. So, that's why it's kind of delayed until the springtime and into the summer to be able to pull that information apart. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
I just have a technical question. For the PSATs and the SATs, digital, you're going to have the students doing that on their school-issued machines?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, there's a new, I don't, for lack of, but it's a, there's a new, not app, but it's a new software that's called Blue Book. And so, we put, we push that out to all of the kids that are taking it. And we've, we run through it. We have them do a test and everything to make sure they're all set. And we ran into some issues on the PSAT day at the beginning of the year. So, there was a lot that was worked out at that point. But, and it's new, that was new for college board also. So, we feel like we're in a good place with that.
What, how do they verify that the student is the student?
So, that's done on-site. So, kids, it's the same as it was years ago, where you have an ID. You have to...
Oh.
Bring an ID with you and identify yourself. And, and so, yeah, it's the same thing. But instead of sitting, sitting there with the, and certain things are shut off. So, you can't open the Blue Book app or the, the software. You can't open it if there's other things open on your computer. So, it doesn't allow you to, it only allows, it shuts everything down to avoid any temptation that there might be. Yeah.
What was the rationale given from the, was it ETS, who does the SAT things, about why the test is shortened from three hours to two? What was the?
So, some of it has to do with access, and some of it has to do with the number of kids that are taking it, I think. I think that the, there are a lot of kids that are taking it in schools now, and they're doing it as part of their school day, and they want to, and they're, because there were few, there are fewer schools right, making it mandatory, they're trying to make it more accessible for more kids to take it, and more appealing for kids to take it, and for schools to administer it during the school day. And so, that's one of the reasons why they shortened it. I'm sure there's other reasons why, but that's the primary one that people are talking about. Yeah, Heather.
So, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. When we look at the longitudinal tracking graphs for the individual class... When we look at the longitudinal tracking graphs for the individual classes for either reading or math, every year, we see the blue and the yellow bars. Those are the folks that are below the 25th percentile and between the 26th and 40th percentile. And every year, when we start in the fall, those blocks are fairly big. And then you start to see the yellow shrink and the blue gets a little bigger and the green gets a little bigger. And then throughout the year, the green gets even bigger and then the blue gets even smaller. And we're consistently seeing that. That work is our interventionists. That work is the tutors. These are the folks, we're talking about their contract at the election. That's that work. And you can see how important it is and how good of a job they're doing, helping our students progress and be successful. And so I love these plots because that work and the MTSS system and all the things that we are putting into place to help kids be successful, you can see it.
And I think, Heather, to go along with that, it's very purposeful work that we decided this is how we were going to do business in Oyster River, because other systems have put in tutors, but they don't use them the way that we're using them, which is to support student growth. And I was talking to a regional union representative, and she was amazed during the negotiation process when she learned how we access student need and use the tutors along with the teachers to support these kids. So it's really quite unique.
Great. Thank you very much.
Superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, I haven't said this word for a very long time, but I have to say it tonight, which is COVID. The CDC changed its guidelines so that we no longer have to have people isolate for five days when they have a confirmed COVID test. What we are recommending, which again is in line with the CDC, is that if people still have a fever or having indigestion, diarrhea, those kinds of things, vomiting, they should stay home. But if their fever's gone and they're not feeling any side effects, they're welcome to come back to work. We are encouraging people who have, who are coming off COVID to wear a mask out of respect for their coworkers. We can't require it, but we're strongly urging it. So that's the change in COVID requirements based on the CDC.
Jim, does that say 24 hours fever-free or just reduced or no fever?
24 hours fever-free.
Okay. Thank you.
So hopefully, that'll be the last time I use that word in my career. I want to plant a seed with the board. You know, Tom alluded to earlier and Gianna has in the past, some of the legislation that we see presented in Concord. And then we get to a place where some of that legislation is sort of shocking. Then you have a piece of legislation that was submitted that made sense, that was, that didn't pass muster at, in Concord. And the piece of legislation that made sense was to treat, treat April 8th as a non-school day because of the eclipse. So we anticipate that absenteeism on April 8th due to deliberate choices by parents and their desire to have their children participate in this event that doesn't happen very often. The last time was eight years ago and was not in our field of vision. This one will be on April 8th between 2:30 and 3:30 in our area. So one of the things that I was talking to Denise and Matt about was the fact that we do count hours as a school system rather than days for students. And we start out the school year with about seven days' worth of hours more than what's required by the state. And we gobble up the snow days through those hours. So we've used two snow days, which is super unusual for this time of year. And looking out the window today, doesn't look like there's going to be any snow coming anytime soon, knock on wood. So what I would like the board to consider, and we'd have to make a decision on this at the next board meeting, is that we treat April 8th as a half-day and let families and children enjoy the eclipse. One of the things that Misty alluded to, David alluded to, Bill alluded to, was this gentleman who's been talking to the schools about the eclipse and so forth. We thought we would end up buying all the students and staff glasses to protect their eyes. Turns out, they're being given to us free of charge. And so I'd like to come back at the next meeting and officially recommend to the board that we treat April 8th as a half-day so that the children and families can participate in the eclipse without fretting about the fact that they're missing school. So I'm planting that seed tonight. The other issue that I wanted to bring you up to speed on was a meeting I had with David and Misty today. So as you know, over the last four school years, we've seen a decline in the enrollment at the elementary school. And that decline has now hit grade five. So one of the good pieces of news, and I think it's a good piece of news, is that the kindergarten enrollment, as it sits today, is about 127 students, which is a rebound from what we've seen in the past. And recognize that we are very early in this process. And so if those numbers continue to climb, we'll be having a discussion before the end of this school year about the need for an additional kindergarten teacher. So I wanted to plant that seed tonight because I didn't want to catch you off guard. In addition to that, and this is something Denise and I were just smiling over because this seems to happen every single school year, either the fourth grade or the third grade appears to be over-enrolled. Well, this particular year, as we're looking forward into next year, right now, the third grade would appear to be over-enrolled. So that's two elementary grades that I want to put on your radar because I may be coming back at a later point saying, we need to add two staff members to make sure we keep our class sizes where we want them to be per policy and what's best for our students. So that's the second seed I'm planting tonight. Not asking you to do anything with it, just letting you know. But I do think that's a good thing because Denise and I have often talked, where she was on the long-range planning committee, about how things work in cycles. So we had this dip down and we anticipated dip up. So I think this is perhaps the beginning of the dip up. We won't know until we get a couple more school years out. So that was COVID, that was enrollment, that was April 8th. And then we talked about the student senate, and I think probably that could be part of the discussion as we go into the added item that the chair added to the agenda. That's my report tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Jim, do you need more time on the April 8th thing, or can we just do it?
You can just do it. I think that normally, I always get hesitant about asking you to do something that I say something because lots of times, the board wants the process. But if the board's consensus is they're ready to move, I think the parents would appreciate knowing early and earlier. And the other thing that I said to the principals today is we need to make sure that our teaching staff is gearing up for this event through class exercises, events and so forth. And they all assured me that that would be happening. So if you're in a position where you feel comfortable with that decision, by all means, please make it.
Other questions?
I just want to, and Misty mentioned this, if we do the half-day, I just want to make sure that the kids won't be on the bus during the eclipse.
Correct. That's why, yeah, if we, if we stayed the normal day, the kids actually would be on the bus during the eclipse. And that becomes, I think, a safety issue because we would have no, I mean, if the kids are with their parents, the parents are going to make sure they have their glasses on. If you've got 60 kids on a bus, the bus driver's driving, and we want to make sure the children's eyes are protected.
The last kid will be off the bus.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We do a normal day, the last kid's home by 1:30.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion about that? Yeah. I make a motion to make April 8th a half-day early release in honor of the eclipse. All right. Heather, and then a second by Brian. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? So that is six in favor and the student rep in favor.
That's terrific. Thank you.
All right. All right, so moving along, a business administrator. No report tonight, okay. Student rep, Maeve, it's nice to have you here tonight. And I know you, you went long in your basketball season.
Yeah, it was a great season. I think we were 13 and 5 by the end, so it was really great. Speaking of athletics, it's been a big couple weeks with finals coming up, semifinals, championships that have happened. So this weekend, girls hockey is headed to the finals. It's at SNHOU. I don't know the time, it's going to likely be in the morning. And the boys hockey team is actually playing right now. It's been like 50 minutes since the game started.
Semi-finals.
Semi-finals. Yep. The D2 girls indoor track team won the state championship. I know Ms. Nellie mentioned Haley Cavanaugh, who placed first in 1500, broke our school record. We also had Mackenzie Cook, who won the 3,000 meter, which I'm out of breath just saying. Erin Carty won the 55-meter hurdles. And then we had Avery Baumgart, Maddie Cook, Neely Roy, Haley Benzenson, all placed top five in their events, which is incredible. And then girls swim was D2 runner-up. And the diving team did incredible. They placed, Greta Parks placed first in the 1-meter. And third place was Lily Rudman. And then Una Blackman, Peyton Zillem, Tessa Brown, all placed top 10 in their events. So incredible events and places in athletics. Recently at the school, we've done, bringing the bystanders, so sophomores advisories are getting spoken to by students and teachers who all went through training about healthy boundaries and relationships and abuse and how to identify that. And I think that's been really important, and there's been a great response by sophomores hearing this. Sports Info Night is Monday, the 11th at 6:00. It's the same time as the concert, which is here. And then National History Day is March 26th at 5:00 PM. It's going to be held at the high school. So yes, that's it.
Did you want to speak to the candidate night?
Candidate night, yes. It's tomorrow at 6:00, correct? So all the candidates will be there. I think it's a great community event that the senate has been planning. So it'll be a good opportunity to talk with candidates. Our dorm high school, correct?
Thank you. No finance committee update? We're good with that?
We had a meeting.
Oh, you did have a meeting. Go ahead, Brian.
Well, first part of the meeting was the facilities fees that we're talking about today. That was most part of the meeting. We'll leave that to later because you have it on the agenda. But we did agree upon a scoring system for our CIP project. So basically, every item on the CIP list will go through a scoring system to prioritize it on the list. Obviously, there's, the final decision is really what fits into the budget. But we did, with Dr. Morse's recommendation, we actually put a score in there for how long it's been on the list. And that was the big one because stuff's been sitting on the list for a long time and just keeps getting pushed back and pushed back. And this, by scoring it a little higher, the older it gets, now it gets, it'll finally get its way done through the system. So hopefully, put that in play with our new facilities director, and he can go through the CIP and juggle it around as he sees fit. So that's it.
Thank you. Unanimous consent agenda. Is there any item on unanimous consent that anyone would like to pull out, Matt?
I'm not sure it needs to be pulled out, but in the policy section, right in the middle, the second blue line, the words speakers and programs is not part of that policy, GBEB. I think it's leftover from the policy that we pulled out. I don't know if we need to essentially pull this, but that's just to make sure that people know that that's not part of that GBEB policy.
Okay. Okay. Right. With that, then, I'm going to make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, which is a revision to a February 21st, 2024 Massway maternity leave of absent from June 4th, 2024, to the end of the year, to now state May 28th, 2024, to the end of the school year, and one-year leave of absence for the 2024, 2025 school year. And then mo harem it maternity leave of absent from June 3rd, 2024, to the end of the school year and for the beginning of the year to November 1st, 2024. And then the list of policies for second read and adoption, which include policy GBEB, Staff Conduct with Students, policy GCM, Professional Staff Workload, and for deletion, policy GCG, Job Sharing, Part-Time Substitute, Professional Staff Employment. So can I have a second? Heather, all in favor? And we have six in favor, the student rep is in favor. Next item, we are up to our discussion items. And the first is the E-Rate bid for the 2024, 2025 school year. Josh?
Good evening, everyone. Josh Holstead, IT Director for the District. You should have a memo in your packet from me about our E-Rate bid. One thing I just wanted to touch on is E-Rate is administered by the FCC. And so when we put these bids out, it actually goes into a national database for people to respond. And I say that just because our responses this year, we only had two. But this is something that gets posted nationally for companies to respond. One company, I noted in the bid, their response was extremely generic. It felt like it was just, I wouldn't say AI responded to it, but it was just a, it was just kind of a sheet of services with no information. So we disqualified them because there was, it really didn't meet the bid specs at all. And so because of that, we did go and do some research to make sure that the bid we did receive was fair and equitable. So we feel comfortable moving forward with OMADA. We've worked with them in the past. They did the network in this building. And the last time we did this, which I had to dig through my notes because pre, anything before COVID, I have a hard time remembering the details on. But the last time we updated the network equipment at the high school was 2017. So we're definitely due for a refresh on that. So any questions I can answer?
Gianna?
It's not a question really, but I was just thinking for the general audience for to define what E-Rate is.
Yeah, sure. So E-Rate is a program that was established, I would say, I believe it was the mid-'90s. And the goal of the program was to get internet into schools. At the time, it was extremely cost prohibitive. When I was in high school, I remember when we got our first 56K modem for the entire district. And so the program started as a way to help with the costs of internet based on your free and reduced lunch numbers. So the way it works is based on our free and reduced lunch numbers, we get a percentage of what we spend back as a rebate. And so over time, the amount of internet that's in schools has grown dramatically. I won't say every school in the country has internet, but we're in a much better place than we were in the mid-'90s. And so what they've done now is said, we can't, it's not just about internet. We need to look at the devices that extend internet into the classroom. So wireless, the switching, things of that nature. So we, it still covers internet. For a long time, it covered phones, pagers, things like that. They've since sunset all that stuff in favor of, you know, modern equipment. So the, I think last year, I think we brought, I brought internet to the board, and we do that. I think our internet is on a three-year cycle. So now we're doing what they call category two, which is the equipment within the building. And so we'll use this. My goal is to use the rebate we get from this purchase to then kick off the elementary schools and start refreshing their equipment.
All right. Can I have a motion? Looks like we need, go ahead, Gianna.
I motion to approve the E-Rate bid for the 2024, 2025 school year.
All right. Can I have a second? Matt? All right. Any additional questions? All in favor? And we have six in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Josh. Yes, Girls Hockey Cooperative adding Co-Brown.
So Rebecca and I can both talk to this. This is a surprise request. Of all the schools that would want to be a cooperative with us, we never anticipated it would be Co-Brown. So we have a cooperative with Portsmouth. It's worked extremely well. You can have up to three schools in a cooperative. Our girls team is with both Portsmouth. Our girls team is with both Portsmouth and Oyster River. Pretty marginal in numbers, and being able to add Co-Brown would bring some additional health to the numbers of kids who are playing ice hockey. So do you want to add anything to that, Rebecca?
Just that our numbers are down, as well as Portsmouth. We only have one freshman player this year, and Andy thinks that at the most, there might be a handful of Co-Brown players. So he doesn't see this becoming where our players would lose playing time or anything like that. He did want me to make sure to mention he is not here because he is at the boys semifinal hockey game on his birthday, and he's going to hate that I said that part.
Did he say "on his birthday"?
No, I added that part. I made sure everybody knew today it was his birthday.
I guess my only question is, is there any speculation in terms of why the numbers are down? I mean, is it just students are interested in other sports? Is it cost-related?
So there is a cost to it, but Andy didn't say that's what he thought it was. Like football, there is a cost to hockey. Part of it, a lot of our players or players in the district play with clubs. And so like soccer, there are club soccer at times, so they're at clubs, they choose not to play for the high school. They keep playing with their clubs.
Brian?
The only issue, because I see it in my district, is we have three teams as well for both our women's and men's hockey team, is if the numbers go down in the schools we're currently in, and they're only add two to three players, you don't have any option to swap out a school. You have to wait about two years, at least two years before you do that. So if we have decreasing numbers, and they're only going to add two to three, just we've got to be aware that it might be detrimental a couple of years down the road, because you have no other option. So I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just want everyone to be aware that that's something that could happen. And I just hate to see the program collapse, because they've been, they've been in the state championship two years in a row. So I'd really hate them to go away.
I do know every two years, you'd have to renew it also. So in two years, we'd make that decision if we wanted to keep the partnership.
Right.
Great. So does anyone like to make a motion? Gianna?
I make a motion to approve the Athletics Girls Hockey Cooperative adding Co-Brown, Northwood Academy, to the ORA-CSD Cooperative Hockey Program.
All right, is there a second? Brian? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And so we have six in favor, and the student rep is in favor.
Thank you.
So we'll add Co-Brown and hope the numbers stay up.
Yes.
With that addition, get some initial, additional enthusiasm.
Agreed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, so let's, before we get into the facility fee, I'd like to maybe just do, and I don't want to get into a long discussion about this, but just in terms of the candidate form, I did send out a memo that just kind of pointed out the history of the form. For many years, we did have a moderator, a town, I mean, a town, a district clerk, who moderated the candidate form. And then when he retired from that position, it kind of fell apart. PTO did it for a little bit, Student Senate, which who did a great job, I think it was two years ago, and now are doing it again this year. But it just seems to me that that just isn't really, you know, to put this on the Student Senate every year. So in my memo, I'm just proposing that we go one of two ways of either perhaps looking into the idea of the district moderator. We could create a policy that says the district moderator, that'll be one of the job duties. If we can do that, I'm not even sure, you know, if there's a, we can't do that. Okay, so then that takes away that. So I guess my suggestion at this point is to, when the new board is seated, to consider adding a subcommittee of the board, whose task would be to identify a procedure, to figure out, you know, a way to be able to moderate the forum on an annual basis. So just kind of some thought. It's certainly nothing we're deciding or anything tonight, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there. And I know, Dr. Morse, you wanted to speak, I believe you wanted to speak to the forum as well?
I did. Just in terms of addressing the Student Senate, my read on the Student Senate is they're enthusiastic to do this work. I think that a couple of the concerns that came up could be addressed with the Student Senate, for example, asking them to capture questions from the community as well as their own questions. I don't think that would be an obstacle that would prevent them from wanting to do this work. What we have found in the past is the high school students are enthusiastic and engaged in this kind of work. But we also have found, other than the year that Gianna did it, it is a monstrous task to get people outside of the school system to pick up this responsibility. And so it's, and quite honestly, my office should not be involved in this work at all, because, you know, we're electing my boss, and I should have no fingerprint at all on any kind of candidate forum. So having the students do it, where they're committed to this kind of work and want to do this kind of work, to me was, you know, a sweet spot for us. Now, given the timeline, we didn't really have a chance to talk to the students about what we would like to see, so they devised it the way that they perceive it to be. So coming out of the election, the committee that you're suggesting, Denise may, may want to meet with the students and refine what it would be, so that it satisfies the need of the community input. Because chasing after people to do this is exactly the opposite of what should be happening, and it becomes cumbersome. And we can't by law mandate what a moderator has to do. So I checked with Diane Goro on that, and she said, "No, you can't do that." So I think your idea of having a conversation past this current hiccup and trying to refine what it is we're doing, I think is a really great one. But truly, it's been a royal pain trying to get people lined up. And again, the only year that it's happened well is the year that Gianna did it.
Thinking back to like, say, like 2014, 2015, and we had two, we had two forums. The students did one.
Yeah.
And there was a forum that was, I think, conducted by Bill Leslie, who's the district clerk. So there was, there was a, it seemed like there was a process in place to do it. And I think we, you know, I think it's great to have the students do it, but I think there should be one that's not, not done by the students. There's a different, maybe a different orientation. So, and so this is something, you might want to set up a committee to look into this. I also think that, and I don't know how we do this, but there needs to be some central place where people in the district can get information on the candidates, I think. And so I think we have to figure out, because I think that when it doesn't happen, people look to us and say, you know, where is stuff? And I say, well, you know, you know, we haven't taken that on, but we think, I think we have a responsibility to ensure that it's done. So, and that could be also a mandate to a committee if you set it up. I personally think it's great to have a student one. I don't think, personally don't think that's adequate. I think there should be, there should be another one as well.
Yes, Gianna?
I'm agreeing with Tom. I think it'd be a great idea to set up a subcommittee for this in order to answer those, to address those things. I also think, I do think the Student Senate does a fantastic job, and I love the fact that they're stepping into that role. But I do think we actually need to have a secondary portion of it as well, particularly generating a questionnaire that would get questions from the public. As Jim has referenced before, for good or ill, I set up the model for that during COVID, and it was quite a process. But I think the group of us who were doing that included Matt, we learned a lot and actually have a model that I think if we were working on it, we could really get that delineated, because we have that experience. So I think that'd be very useful. And just as a general comment, the fact that we're actually having a hard time in getting candidate information, I think it's actually important to note that it is a result of the collapse of local journalism. And I think that's an important thing to address, because it's a societal issue we have going forward. And actually, the school does a pretty darn good job with encouraging journalism. We have the mouth of the river. We have the Student Senate that largely fills that role. And I just think it's important to recognize that we are trying to address that issue, but to understand why this is actually happening is because of that. And that is why we're in this unusual situation of having to generate candidate questionnaires when people should technically be campaigning, and we should technically have nothing to do with it. So I just wanted to make that comment. But yes, I definitely think subcommittee moving forward to figure this out in a way that's streamlined and legal.
All right, great. Oh, Brian?
I seem to remember a couple of years ago suggesting that we take that process over, because what was happening was, first of all, we didn't have the technology, so we got them to use the technology that we have, which is much more advanced, because I remember we had some debates that were cutting out, and we lost video, we lost sound. And the other one was, there was a lot of questions that came in from the public that should have been filtered before they came, because it had absolutely nothing to do with the school board, or the responsibilities of the school board. And, you know, until you get on the board, you don't realize where your responsibilities lie, and you have all these questions that, you know, are basically day-to-day activities of the district, which we don't oversee at all. We have zero authority over that. So I suggested that a couple of years ago, and everyone kind of shot me down, but hopefully we'll bring it back. But I do think it's a process that we, as a board, should at least oversee, maybe not run, but oversee, because I think we should first vet the questions to make sure they're, they apply. And the second one, I don't think the moderator should be involved at all, especially if the current moderator is a former school board member. I don't think, I think there's a little conflict there, so. But otherwise, I'd be very supportive of a subcommittee, you know, looking into that, so.
Okay, great.
Very briefly, just very briefly, one thing I would say, though, with forming the subcommittee, I think it'd be important to establish the rules of it, but I actually think the school board really can't have anything to do with the generation of the questions and the questionnaire, simply because it's highly likely that some of the school board would be an incumbent.
I didn't say that. I said vet the questions.
That's still sticky. But this is a discussion for.
I just really.
A subcommittee would have a charge, and you follow the charge. That's the rules of the subcommittee.
I just really just kind of wanted to plant that seed of adding that subcommittee when it comes time for the new board to have subcommittee appointments. But I'm going to, let's move on now, because I know there's folks here who have been waiting patiently for our discussion around facility fees. So, Dr. Morse?
The last charge of the board was to send the document back to Finance, and Finance addressed the issues that the board asked them to address. I've asked Amy to do a really quick PowerPoint, just reminding the board where we've been, because this has been on the agenda of the board since October, November, and we've been talking actively about it since January, so. Amy?
I'm going to get it to come up. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay. So really quickly, as Dr. Morse said, he asked me this afternoon, just to bring up exactly what the Finance Committee had looked at and what the board had asked the Finance Committee to do. So back in December, just after budget, we actually started, the Finance Committee came together, and they were asked to look at facilities use fee schedule, look at the surrounding areas, try to find comparable locations that either had the same fields we had or the same facilities we had, because not everybody had turf and not everybody had an auditorium or different things like that. So we went by the standard locations that you usually use in Oyster River for comparison. So Bo, Exeter, South Hegan, Portsmouth. The board even asked us to look at St. Thomas, and we looked at UNH, because it's right next door. The types of facilities we looked at specifically were auditorium, turf's field, gymnasium, track, tennis courts, baseball and softball fields, and other related fields. Also, what we looked at were the types of groups, whether they were nonprofit or profit, whether they were in district or out of district. That is something that is reflected in our policy, but not reflected in other policies. So we tried to look at everybody, put them side by side, and pull out certain things to make it so we were comparing apples to apples. How were they charged, whether it was hourly versus daily, if they had minimums or maximums, other fees they might have charged, such as lights, custodial setups for breakdowns of events, whether or not you needed technology there, whether you needed custodial to lay down floor coverings, they had all sorts of fees. And we looked at whether or not we had those fees and whether they had those fees. In conclusion, what the committee found, after looking at all of this information and taking in the board feedback, they revised the fee schedule to make it clearer for those groups. For those looking to rent our facilities, we removed outdated information on our fee schedule. We still had reference to the old middle school. So people were looking to rent a room we didn't even have anymore in this new building. We also wanted to bring us, in line with the surrounding schools and buildings. Right now, we do have sections of our facilities use that has absolutely no charge for usage. We were not in line with the surrounding communities. The other reason why, the purpose that the committee was looking at this was to offset the cost of maintaining our facilities. We are not looking to bring in money as a revenue source to make money in the district. We're just looking to bring in money to help us maintain the fields. That also comes in line with Warren Article Number Seven, that the school board has approved. It was to take those fees and put them into a trust fund and use it for the maintaining of the fields, to check that the turf field has the right type of infield in it, to make sure that, you know, any lining, anything like that, that we are spending money on, we would use those fees to offset that cost. And the other item that we're also looking at is to ultimately extend the life of the district's assets. We don't want to have too much excessive wear and tear on them, so they don't last as long as we had anticipated when we installed them. Any questions anybody has as to why we were looking at the fee schedule?
Just a comment. You know, we look forward to, in the future, and we look back, you know, and we compare the fees, it was pretty obvious that we were not in line with our neighboring districts. One of the issues we're going to have in a few years is the field turf field, the carpet on the field turf field at the high school is going to have to be replaced. Cost of that right now is no less than $800,000. That is going to be borne mainly by the district. If we had fees like this in line, we probably would have at least saved up about $200,000 by now, but we haven't. So in essence, we've lost about $200,000. That field has to be replaced. It has a lifespan of 10 to 12 years. Probably be about 12 years when we replace it. It has been used a lot, and the more you use it, the quicker it goes through its life cycle. Now, no matter if we charge somebody or we have to take out a bond to pay for it, ultimately, it comes from the taxpayers. Okay? Because we are solely funded by the taxpayers. So if it was people that use the field that pay for it, which you think would make sense, or every single taxpayer in this district is going to have to pay that amount of money to replace that field. So as great as it sounds not to charge people to use it, it's not realistic, because there is an expense to maintain that field. Even if it was a grass field, we'd have to maintain it. But the difference with having a turf field is we can actually use it, like this year, we could basically use it year-round. When you have a grass field, you have to let it recover. And when it's rainy out, you can't use it. When it's raining on a field turf field, it's just like a normal day. So we have to keep that in mind, that we have a longer season, we can use it more, but the fact that we're using it, we're going to have to replace it. Whether, even if it's used or not, we're going to have to replace it. So ultimately, we're trying to save some money in order to save some money in account to offset that expense. Otherwise, if we have no money in a couple of years, we're going to have to go out and bond it, because we're not going to have, we're not going to be able to put it in the general fund. We run the risk, we have to put that on a ballot. We run the risk of getting it to fail. We don't have the money. So I'd prefer not to bond it. I'd prefer to plan ahead and put that money in account and work it into the CIP as far as getting it replaced, and go down that route. So, because it's an expense that's going to happen no matter what. And either we bear it as a district, which means every taxpayer in the district pays it, or the people that utilize it, the ones that actually utilize it, will help fund it. Not fund it 100%, but will help offset that expense, which I think is fair.
Others? Other comments? I know, I'll just say for myself, some of the letters that we got, and by the way, I do want to thank everyone who took the time to write us letters. I absolutely read every single one, and some of them were confusing, because the amounts that they were saying that they would have. that they were saying that they would have to spend didn't seem to jive with what we had down. So I, part of what I'm thinking might need to happen is I do think perhaps we need to clarify it a little bit more. So for example, like when I'm looking at the Moheramit and I'm looking at someone who's using the gym and it says, you know, for a nonprofit, it's $200. And I know at least one of the letters that we had, probably more, said, you know, well, there's like three sessions on a Saturday morning and so that's like $600. And I'm not sure that's right or that's our intent. I feel like, you know, if we have a group and they have, you know, like, I don't know, just different ages, you know, they have their young, the youngest up through the oldest, so they have three different groups, they're all elementary age or what have you, up to fourth grade, is that $200 for the whole Saturday morning? So I guess I'm a little bit confused, you know, in terms of that and maybe we need to clarify it a little bit better and maybe you can just answer that question for me or Dr. Morse. Like, so if you have one group and they are using the Moheramit gym for an entire morning, but they essentially have like three practices within that morning, are they being charged for each individual practice or 200 for the whole morning?
For the morning.
For the whole morning?
It's the day.
For the day. So even if they were using it for the entire day, it would be $200. Yes, Heather?
So when we went through this, and so I'm going to use mostly me, I don't think I fully thought, we spent so much time thinking about the turf fields and sort of the larger scale assets, the middle school and the high school assets, that we didn't spend a lot of time thinking about how the elementary schools functionally get used in that hourly rate kind of thing. And so when I'm looking at it now, you know, putting the gym on an hourly rate makes sense. Putting some of the classrooms on an hourly rate for, say, the Boy Scouts want to have a meeting at night, $50 for a day when they need an hour on a Thursday evening seems rather steep. And so I think the process of doing this, because it's been so long since we've touched it, as we talk about it, we find other things we're going to chip away at. And so I would be in favor, I know we wanted to get it done, but I would be in favor sort of kicking it back and continuing to chip away at some of the things, think about what folks have said. My intent is still to put it in place in some form because I think it is important, but I don't think we are to the point where it's final. And that is my personal opinion.
The, oh, go ahead, Brian.
I just want to clarify too, there was, when it comes to custodians, you're only, anybody that rents is only paying for a custodian if one is not normally on duty. But we have night custodians. So if they're practicing at night, we already have one on duty, they don't have to pay for a custodian. On a Saturday, if we can get a custodian, yes, they would have to pay for it. We're having a hard time getting custodians on Saturday, so if we can't get one, they don't get charged for one. But, you know, because there is, you know, having people in our building, there really should be somebody there representing the district, although, you know, and a custodian usually represents that. But it's not, it's not something that is charged every time somebody uses a field or a, obviously, but we don't have a custodian for a baseball field. It's only the gyms we have that for and only if we don't already have somebody on duty on a regular schedule. So just want to clarify that.
Yeah. I would, I would be concerned, I guess I'm thinking about it in terms of, you know, basketball for elementary school kids in the, in the Moheramit or Massway, whatever, you know, do we really need to charge them? Because that would be $180 in addition to what they're paying. So I hear Heather and I think, I think this does need to be looked at again. And one of the things that I think is missing, which actually really jumped out at me when I was reading the letters, is scenarios. So what I would ask the finance committee to do when you review this is to give some real, real use scenarios, like, okay, this group, you know, this is how they use it. They use it on a Saturday morning, you know, with these different groups and this X number of dollars is what they would actually be charged. And I'm not saying you need to do like every possible scenario, but if you could give a couple of examples of what that actually looks like in terms of total cost, because like I said, when I was reading the letters and I was like, really? It would cost that much? Some of them just jumped out at me and it may be their misunderstanding of it, but then, you know, I think then we need to clarify what it would actually be.
There is a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of it was, was put out as false information by certain people. But I would say that if a custodian has to come in, it's an expense to the district. It's not, there is no reason why we should take on that expense if they're the ones coming in to use it. So, and the reason why it's higher on a weekend is because we have to pay overtime on a weekend for somebody to come in. So again, expense to the district. So that normally wouldn't exist if somebody wasn't using it. It could be a bunch of guys that want to just get together and play hoop for a few hours to stay in shape. It's the same thing. So, but just wanted to clarify that too.
I think another reason not to make a decision tonight is that even though we've been talking about it for a long time, I think the comment period has really just begun. I think in the last two or three days and we have, I know I have probably 10 letters, you know, that came in after four o'clock today that I haven't had a chance to read and, you know, it's, I think, I think that we need, you know, that we need to hear like which, which of these items are particularly troublesome that we might want to look at. I think there's a kind of a process that's kind of starting now in terms of getting comment that we need to, so to make a decision tonight, I think, would, would be premature.
I'd be fine with it going back to the finance committee and with me and Heather, I guess, for now.
I agree with both the sentiments from Tom and Brian, I think it does, and Heather, to have it go back to the finance committee. And I think this might be a way of addressing something that you were saying Denise, is that we might need to kind of have like a programmatic line where in some cases, having it hourly makes sense, but in some cases, if you have like a basketball program, it was one of the things that Tom mentioned earlier was there being like a maximum fee and that you might have to look at it whether or not, with the realistic thing of like how many hours actually is it and what would it end up total being versus like how much would that be as a program, like the basketball programs that Maximum Velocity and ORYA uses, in order to see if we have a fee that is equitable and manageable. One of the things I actually also am concerned about is I do want to make it clear that we are trying to be as equitable as possible and that any local nonprofit should have equal access to the facilities. And I don't think we should have preferential treatment to anybody. The preference actually, of course, goes to the school district itself and then it'll be going to the, the local nonprofits. So just wanted to make that clear. But yeah, I think discussion isn't done and I think a lot of the letters were useful in hearing what people's concerns were and also clearly there are some things within this document that we do need to work on the, the language and to make sure that we're very clear about how we're charging. So, yep, I guess we're, we're not done. Just fine.
All right. So I guess we'll leave it at that. It'll go back to finance and then we will bring in, we'll have to get our new board members up to speed. All right. What's that, Heather?
So Tom's technically still on finance until the election, so, you know, we could schedule like eight meetings.
You're not done, you're not done.
Really getting going.
I think that's a good idea because he, you know, he's up to speed, but. All right. Moving along, school board committee updates. Do we have any committee updates? Yes, Heather?
So sustainability met without me on Monday because I was traveling for work, but Suzanne gave you all the goodies, so. And then we have another meeting April 1st, right Suzanne? I think that's, I think that's what. Yeah, I think that's right. So that's sustainability.
Any other committee updates? Yes, John?
We had a D I J meeting on, I think it'll be the Tuesday before break. We worked to get on finalizing the program we're having planning for May, which it would be lovely if I actually could pull up that date for everybody.
May 2nd.
Thank you. And the concept is the idea of belonging. We'll have more of a message for that at a later date with a flyer that Rachel, that Miss Blunt, that will be able to define. But one of the things that happened with the meeting was that we wanted to be able to have a panel of different speakers. And one of the things we're having idea of what it was, was having some student input with kind of like an art project where people could be expressing their thoughts about it and their feelings of belonging. The idea here is to have a good community outreach and be able to share ideas and experiences to create more of a sense of belonging within the community. So I'm really looking forward to this and we're still working on getting all the kinks out, but I think it will be a good thing and we'll share more as we get there.
Thank you. All right. We, are there any public comments?
Just before you begin, if you came in late and you have not signed in, please make sure that you sign in on this sheet before you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Bogle. I've never done this before. I'm a Durham resident of about 14 years. I'm the mom of a 13-year-old girl and an 11-year-old boy. I have been an ORYA basketball coach for several years. I have been an ORYA flag football coach, believe it or not, and a flag football coordinator for several years. I started the tradition of running the cider donut snack shack at the flag football games to raise spirit and money for the pizza party at the end of the season. And I'm here because I heard about this ORYA facility increase and it's something I really care about on behalf of my family and my kids. Hannah and Peter have played soccer, baseball, basketball and flag football ever since they could. Especially from my son, Peter, it is part of his core identity. He played at the UNH UVM halftime game last night wearing his ORYA jersey proudly and it's just a huge part of our life. It's how we've met other families in the community. It's how we connect with our friends every week. It's how we take pride in where we live and respectfully, from what I've heard, I'm so glad that you're considering more conversation about this. I think from what I've heard, the proposed rates would make this very unaffordable for most families and I really appreciate all the consideration before making a final decision. Thank you so much for your service.
And I don't know if anyone came in late, but if you could keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Give me a two-minute warning, I talk. So hi, everyone. I also am here to talk about the youth sports programming fees. A little bit about me, I have four children in the community, so I'm sharing my thoughts kind of from that lens of a lot of children, although it's really not going to impact my household anymore. I have one in college, two in high school, and my youngest is kind of phasing out of youth sports. But I do think it's an important topic. I don't really, I haven't tracked the fee structure that you've proposed and I just want to say that I think that families, especially those like mine with multiple children, if increasing the cost could really have an impact on participation, especially if they want to have their children be able to have a variety of different just sports that they want to try out. One thing I noticed on the slide earlier, when we were looking at other towns and comparing, I don't think that any of our three towns that I'm aware of have a rec program. I know that Portsmouth has a whole community campus that's funded by the town and it's a, if none of you've been there, I've been there several times. My children take part of some of their programming and their community campus is massive. It's kind of like Durham Parks Rec, but a really big version of it. And so I think it's really interesting when we compare ourselves in that setting to other towns when towns have other resources that we don't have here. And I think a rec program's an important one. I would caution us if we cut back and we limit the ability for some of our youth at the younger ages to get involved because of cost concerns, that we might not have as many of our youth being a part of sports programming and that would impact their just community spirit and that they would bring to the middle school and the high school competitive edge. I think that we, I used to coach baseball for ORYA. My daughter, that's youngest, she plays with MVs, so I don't have an allegiance to one of the nonprofits or another, but I do think that it's important that we give our kids these opportunities to explore other sports and try to get that competitive edge young. I know that in baseball, for instance, we'd go up against Dover and they were fantastic and they have a huge program. I would hate to see us financially limit the participation from students because it would just minimize our capacity to have more kids involved. And, sorry, I know I'm on time. I think that just the thing about youth sports also, when kids are little, the gal in front of me mentioned it, we meet a lot of other family members or families in the community. You know, Matt through sports, I know Dan Klein through sports. And I wouldn't have had that if we didn't have our kids playing baseball and these other programs that are offered. And also it gave us something to talk about with the kids around the table. It brings kids together, it gets them away from devices, right? It gets them out being active. Mentally and physical health is important. So I think just, I would say that our, I believe that we all have a goal of offering youth sports and these opportunities for our students, but we need to make sure we ensure that they're affordable to parents. And I realize it's a real concern about facility fees. I hear that and I think that we shouldn't ignore that. We should maybe think about a way that we can get there so we don't just target the small section. And I guess I have a suggestion. I like that you paused on the idea. Durham Parks and Recs has a really great program and I know that they offer, I think, dance and yoga and maybe even pickleball. And I don't think that they have to pay for the facilities. I think their resources are covered by the larger tax base.
Excuse me, it is, it's three minutes, so if you could wrap up, please.
I just want to say, I would encourage the organizations that already exist that are offering sports, maybe they look at partnering with Durham Parks and Recs with some sort of cooperative or collaborative mechanism so that the tax base could kind of feed in together and that way it could be more inclusive and more efficient. Thank you.
My name's Scott Bogle. I live at Fort Krogen Lane. You heard a minute ago from my wife, Heidi. We have two kids who have participated in ORYA youth sports for many years. I actually grew up in Durham and participated in ORYA youth sports in the 1970s and 1980s before moving away for 20, 25 years before coming back to Durham. I'm very happy that the board decided to hold off on making a decision on this tonight. I think the example that you were getting letters with inaccurate information just underscores that there hasn't been enough information about this shared with the public yet and it would be a great benefit for folks to have more time to weigh in on this and for further consideration. One of the things that, well, there are a lot of things that we value about our kids' participation in ORYA sports, just learning teamwork, learning that you get better at things with practice, healthy physical activity and just having fun with friends. I have real concerns about sort of the professionalization of youth sports and kids being pushed to specialize earlier and get more intense about their athletic participation. I think that drives kids out of youth sports. One of the wonderful things about ORYA is that kids have an opportunity to participate in a lot of different activities over time. A couple of points that I'd like to make that I hope you'll consider in further deliberation on this. One, I don't think that all nonprofits are created equal in terms of the sort of access they should get to facilities. ORYA has been around for 50 years, serves all three towns in the school district and has a recreational sports mission as compared to, for example, a group like Maximum Velocity. Yes, they're a nonprofit, but they are focused on elite sports development basically for kids, not necessarily from the district. I think there should be some consideration of differing rates for different organizations that use the facilities. I think it wouldn't be unreasonable for Parks and Rec to pay a share for their activities. And I think another thing that should be considered is if the major concern is funding the replacement of, that. the replacement of the turf field at the high school, I think that fees charged should reflect the impact on the specific facilities being used. So if the need for generating funding is mostly focused on sports that use the turf field, then perhaps there should be a different rate that reflects the cost to support that facility as opposed to the cost to support the gym. So I suspect we'll probably put down more coherent thoughts into a letter and send it along, but I wanted to make those comments now.
I wanted to comment on two things talked about. The candidate forum, just to get away from the rec sports thing. I've been involved in that three times, two times as a PTO member at different schools and once as a candidate. And I think it would be great if this school board like gave more direction without really hindering the process because at Mastway, when I was the president, we hosted and all I did was bring refreshments and served as a timekeeper at the library. I think Tom was there, that was the first time I met him, but it was like super chill. And then at the middle schools, like the horrible sound wasn't working. It was horrible. And then as a candidate, when Gianna ran it, I thought that was very impressive how it was done, but I also think if the school board is going to be involved, then the school board should not comment on who they would like to be elected or any kind of comments about any candidate because somebody commented about me as a candidate publicly, it was pretty crappy. So that's all I got to say about that. And then for the facilities stuff, Brian, you mentioned that the people that are using it should probably pay more. There are tons of things that happened every day in the school that I would not want to pay for that I'm forced to. So maybe a warrant would be a better idea than passing that fee on to the people that are using it because I think that's a dangerous comment to, there's a lot of things that people, like elderly people in the community aren't necessarily using the school, so they shouldn't have to pay for the bond for the middle school. Like, I don't know if that's the way to go. Maybe we figure out something going forward, but we don't double tax people now. Thank you. And thanks for thinking about it more.
Hi, board members. My name is David Desmond. I am a resident of Lee. I have two children in the ORYA program in or MS schools. I am the treasurer of ORYA and I'm a board member. I devote a lot of my spare time to ORYA. I am a 30-year certified public accountant. I've done a lot of work in accounting firms and large public companies, but I second Peter's comment in that this program is one of the best I've ever seen. I've lived in multiple New England communities that have sports and this particular organization supports rec sports. It's not pay-to-play, it's not competitive to, you know, cutthroat sports. This is a true grassroots sports organization. And I'm going to try to strike a balance being, between being constructive and direct with you all, but I'm very disappointed by the approach of this school board towards ORYA. ORYA is your kids. 88% of these kids live in your three communities. 7% of them live in Barrington, which is also your community. And then there's, that leaves 5% of kids outside the community and that's mostly in the hockey program. And this is K through 8. Obviously, the high school supports athletics at a competitive level. This is your farm system. And we're doing it in 15 sports. Our struggle is the winter season and the shoulder seasons when our kids need the turf fields. Summer, spring, fall, we're self-sufficient. We have very good agreements that are constructive with the towns of Madbury and Lee where we manage and maintain those fields and in some cases, pay for the capital to build them in the first place. We just created a new field at Little River Park in Lee. We irrigated it, we spent $15,000. That's our capital money. We use it wisely and we like to use it when we have control. With you folks, we have no control. We're at your, we're at your whim. And our kids want to play basketball, they want to practice baseball offseason, they want to play indoor soccer. UNH, look at the facilities they have. We have no access there. They don't want to work with us. We have a Catholic church right here in town. It's got a basketball court. Some of these people played basketball when they were kids there. They won't let us in. We offered to pay them $20,000, $30,000 to upgrade their court so our kids could get in there because they get shut out at or CSD. If you can't get behind us as a youth sports organization with 95% overlap with your kids, who can you get behind? I'm upset. And I heard your comment earlier. I take exception to that, but I understand how it happened. We tried to control the message in our group. You can't control that number of parents. And I understand you got to pay for it, but I'm a CPA and I've been a CPA for a long time. You all didn't budget for this and that's shame on you. It should be paid for by the taxpayers. It's public infrastructure. Basketball courts, soccer fields, turf fields, it's public infrastructure. Treat it like public infrastructure. Thank you.
I'll keep this brief. Matt Claude, executive director of ORYA. Really respect the decision to continue discussing the fee schedule. Happily provide any information I can to help in that process. I'm happy to be part of that process. I'm happy to provide information about how, you know, decisions you might want to go to would impact the ORYA community before decisions are finalized. Use me in any way, shape, or form to help finalize this. I will come and help in any way that I can. I want to reiterate one thing that Jody Walker said. In the search with the other communities, ORYA is a very unique organization in the whole state. We're one of the very few that have multiple sports under one umbrella. A lot of communities have their local recreational programs, offer things that are fully funded by tax dollars, like Durham Parks and Rec is. And then other communities, in addition to that, also have their individual sport nonprofits who are completely volunteer. To offer programming for over 2,000 kids a year, 30-plus individual programs, 12 to 15 sports a season, I'm the only full-time employee and I've been the only employee for, since the pandemic. It's a very difficult job to do by myself, but we get it done because we've got such a great support staff of volunteers, some of whom you've heard today. And in those communities, they have access often to their own recreational facilities and in some cases, community centers. And that reduces the burden that would go to needs for school facilities. So that's something that should be accounted for in that process of, of looking at how other communities handle that as well. So again, I'm happy that the discussion will continue. Please utilize me in any way, shape, or form that you can so that I can help inform you about how those decisions would affect the ORYA community, which you can tell is really passionate about their youth sports. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So, closing actions. Our next meeting will be March 20th. We will have our new board members or member, however it works out, I guess. And we do need a non-public, so we'll make a motion to enter non-public under RSA 91-a: colon 3, Roman numeral 2. Is there another number? I think that's correct. Yeah, number, number one?
I think it's three.
It's three. Thank you so much, Brian. Number three, discussion of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. So I make that motion. Can I have, oh, a second. Heather? And we do need a roll call vote for this.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Ryan Sisneros, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Gianna Jelsoft, yes.
All right, we are entering non-public. Thank you, everyone. We will just come out and adjourn. There won't be any additional business. Thank you.